Good evening, I'd like to call the Harwich Planning Board meeting to order. It's Tuesday, July 9th, 2019. It's about 6:38, we're a few minutes late. And as always, we have a recording and taping notification which is required by law. The town may and does audio and video record this meeting. Anyone in the audience intending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the Chair. Anybody? You're allowed to, it's okay. Okay, so, we're gonna start the meeting with a continuation of PB 2019-3, Harwich Retail LLC. And Chad, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and I'll go back and just gonna plan to read the letter in that we submitted to the Board. Be a little bit shorter than the last meeting. Yeah, I'm Chad Burbaker with Harwich Retail LLC, LaScotty Development. So, the letter dated today that we submitted to the Planning Board was, "Dear Chairman Joyce and members of the Planning Board, please accept this letter as notice that Harwich Retail LLC as applicant respectfully requests to withdraw without prejudice its application, PB 2019-03 with the Town of Harwich Planning Board. We appreciate the Board's time and consideration of our application."
Thank you very much, and you guys did a nice job, and I think the folks that were speaking up did a nice job as well, so, thank you all.
You do need to vote?
I'm gonna make a motion.
Joe's gonna make the motion.
I make a motion that we allow the Harwich Retail LLC to withdraw without prejudice, PB 2019-03, from the Harwich Planning Board.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Yeah, you guys don't get the vote, but that's okay.
Thank you very much, Chad.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
Okay, the next case we have is PB 2019-23, Edson Eldridge as applicant, care of John D. McElwee, PLS representative, Blue Land LLC. As owner seeks approval of a two-lot definitive subdivision with waivers and a panhandle lot pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325.18, paren's Q, closed paren's, and mass general law, Code 41, Section 81-K-GG. The property is known as 1022 Queen Anne Road, map 74 parcel W-2, in the RR and WR zoning districts. Charlene, are there any comments from the planning?
Not yet, and wait until the applicant makes that, but we needed people to clear out and so people can hear.
If you're the applicant, so you should probably come up here.
Yes, sure.
I'm gonna actually recommend that he stay up there, only because John is very soft-spoken.
Okay.
And I'm concerned that no one's gonna hear him.
Fine with me.
Just...
I'll try and speak as loud as I can.
That's a better microphone for you.
Okay, thanks. John McElwee with Coastal Engineering, and we have an application before you, which is a two-lot subdivision of property. One of the lots is a panhandle. The property's located at 1022 Queen Anne Road, which is on the northerly side of the road between Cemetery Road and Route 39. The parcel is located in the RR zoning district. It's also in the Drinking Water Resource Protection Overlay District. The lots that we're gonna create on this site, which is two and a half acres, we're gonna create a one-acre lot which is going to encompass the dwelling and the garage, as shown on the plan, has an area of 43,581 square feet and frontage on Queen Anne Road of 224.82 feet. The second lot is gonna be 64,883 square feet. It has frontage on Queen Anne Road of 35.05 feet. This lot does have a panhandle associated with it to give it access. The panhandle complies with the zoning requirements in Section 325-18, Paragraph Q. We have the 35 feet of width, and the panhandle is 200 feet long, which meets the requirements of the town for a panhandle. Each of the lots has, meets the shape requirement, as you see in the plan, it is, each of the lots are quite rectangular except for the panhandle part itself. Excuse me. We are asking for a couple of waivers. Some of it's due to the nature of the application itself. It's a definitive approval by the Board request that we are making, and one of the requests, or one of the subdivision requirements, is to prepare plan and profile and cross-sections of roadways. We aren't proposing any roads, so we are asking for a waiver of all of the requirements associated with road design. We're also requesting a performance guarantee bond covenant to be waived. Nothing's gonna be developed on the site, you know, because of the plan. And also, we have installed all of the bounds that was requested or required by the subdivision rules and regulations, so that has already been taken care of. So, we're hoping the Board would see that as a request for a waiver. And lastly, we're requesting a waiver for topography of the site. We're basically dealing with this site in horizontal boundary matters beforehand, and once we got to the point of making the application, we discovered that a topographic plan is required. And the site doesn't have any huge features to it that would warrant a topographic plan to be looked at by the Board to make a decision on the layout of the subdivision, so we're also asking for that waiver at this time. We hope that the Board would approve our plan, and I'm open to any questions.
Okay. Charlene, do you wanna start?
Sure. We have heard from the town engineer, all-site drainage shall, his recommendation is all-site drainage shall be controlled, contained, and infiltrated on-site. The fire department indicated that it would require house numbering at the road for the panhandle. The health department had a meeting on June 11th. A discussion took place regarding a request to consider a two-lot subdivision prepared by Coastal Engineering Company dated May 31, 2019. The Board unanimously approved the definitive subdivision plan with the following conditions: One, the lot shall be served by town water; Two, Lot 1 shall be served by municipal sewer within 45 days of availability; Three, Lot 2 shall be designed with a fully compliant septic system, exiting the building on the street side if installed prior to sewer development; if development after sewer's available connection is required immediately; and Four, approval is, it should be, is contingent upon sign-off from the assessors department. Police conservation and highway had no concerns. My comments, there have been some questions that we fielded in office as to the ownership of the property. However, just for the Board's information, it's not within the Board's jurisdiction to question ownership. A deed and a plan have been provided. The applicant-owner has signed the application, and the surveyor has stamped the subdivision plan. Board of Health notes will need to be added to the plan prior to plan endorsement. The request for the panhandle lot to serve as frontage and access for Lot 2 is adequate. The first request regarding the waiver of road construction, plan, and profile, I think, is appropriate. In my report to you, I did say that I was not supportive of the second request for no covenant. However, in a conversation that I had with Mr. McElwee this morning, they have installed all the bounds, and that was my concern, is to ensure that bounds were placed. Those are in. The plan would have to be revised to indicate, 'cause on the plan now, it says plan, bounds found and bounds to be installed. It just needs a new note saying all the bounds installed and where those are located. So, as long as that has occurred, a covenant, in my opinion, is not required. The request for topography, I can't really support. We always require topography. You know, this is a relatively flat lot, but I leave that entirely up to the Board's decision. I would remind the Board that you do have time to consider and take action on this This was filed on June 4th of this last month. The Board does have 135 days, so you do have until October 18th to render a decision and file that with the town clerk. So, don't feel like you need to be rushed on this, I'm just letting you know what the timeline is. We did hear from the town engineer, and that concludes my report.
Okay. Any other questions? Joe?
My first question is, did you present us with a deed that shows that you own these two lots? Not you, your client owns these two lots?
That's in the file.
I didn't get one.
You don't always get all that stuff, I can show you.
I know, well, I'm not about to go forward on something if you don't own it.
I have a deed, I probably have, I probably have a copy of it here with me.
Well, I'd like to see it, because it seems to be a question was raised with respect to it.
As I indicated in the staff report, we did receive a deed and a plan indicating the ownership. And here is a copy.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Attorney William Crowell from Harwich.
I need this back.
Sure, thank you.
It represented the petitioner, Blue Land LLC, when they bought, when it bought the property back in mid-May, the principal of which is Edson Eldridge, who is here this Attorney Mike Ford represented the seller, the estate of Sylvia Doucette. Mike did extensive title research. I did extensive title research in representing Mr. Eldridge. And Coastal Engineering, Mr. McElwee, did their own independent title research, all of which concluded that the Doucette family has good title, insurable title to the lot in question that's shown on the plan. They do have a deed, Mr. McParland. We have a deed, I can give you a copy of, if Mr. McElwee doesn't have it.
I just gave him a copy.
Okay, thank you. And we obtained a, what's called a clean title insurance policy, an owner's policy, from First American Title Insurance Company, walked it through with their title originator, who I understand went to the top person in the company for approval. So, I don't know why the title is being questioned, other than I, my...
I'm not questioning the title, I just, I'm looking at the deed and I can't...
While I have the mic, if I can...
Hopefully both parcels are in the deed, I assume they are, right?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'll be brief with this, but since it did come up, and I don't think it's the, I certainly don't think it's the jurisdiction of the Planning Board to get into whether it's title or not. Mike Ford's reaction was, "You got a deed, you got a plan." However, my colleague Attorney Bill Riley was courteous enough to give me a call this morning to say he was gonna be present this evening to question the title, and that he represents an abutter, and has an engineering firm that says that the plan may be incorrect. The difference is that we have a deed and we have a plan, and his client does not. And although I don't think it's the jurisdiction of the Planning Board, and it's not, certainly you folks, I'm sure, don't want to get into deciding who's got good title and who doesn't. I think that should be the end of the matter, but in case it isn't, he's going to say that our deed says 110 feet on Queen Anne Road. And we know that that's what the deed says, it said that, it has said that for a long time. But the abutter that he represents, that title has been the same description since 1931, it has not expanded. If the abutter is claiming that he owns a portion of our lot, he's had the same description since 1931. I don't see where he has any claim to any portion of the lot shown on our plan. Thank you.
Don't leave, Billy, please. But in fact, the front of the lot is 224 feet.
Yes.
Not 110.
I'm sorry.
Yes, I understand what you're saying, but that's what I was looking at this afternoon.
Yes, and saying, "Why does the deed say 110?" Somebody miscalculated a long time ago in estimating that distance. The bottom line is, the bottom line is, that that deed says 110 bounded to the land of Tony Anton. Tony Anton has owned that lot, that house lot that, of the abutter that Attorney Riley represents, since, that deed description has been the same since 1931. So, our position is, and the title insurance company's position is, that that controls, that that saying that the easterly abutter is land of Tony Anton controls over a miscalculation of the linear feet on Queen Anne Road. And conversely, the owner of the Anton lot, Mr. Riley's client, has had the same description since 1931. His lot has not expanded for any reason. Ours says it goes to the land of Tony Anton. Period. And this is what we didn't want to get into, because I'm sure the Planning Board doesn't want to get into that.
Yeah, it's not, not something...
I just wanna make sure you were validly before us.
We are, we have a deed and a plan. When I talked to Mike Ford two weeks ago, he said, "What's the problem? We have a deed and a plan." He's Town Council for Orleans, he's been our moderator for 45 years, he's been a lawyer in town for four years longer than I have. We both are of the position that, Attorney Riley, I think, is a lot longer, been practicing a lot longer than us, but...
And I'm longer than both of you.
But it's our, in our experience, in our opinions as local conveyancers, obviously reasonable minds can differ, but there's no question that we have a deed and a plan, that's all that's required to come before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowell.
Thank you.
Bill?
I still have a question on the, on the frontage on Queen Anne Road.
For me, Mr. Stoltz?
Yeah, is it 110 feet or 224 feet?
That's what I was just trying to explain.
Yeah.
110.
It is as shown on that plan.
Is it? Bobby?
It's as shown on the plan, that's our frontage on Queen Anne Road.
There's the 224, plus 35.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions from the Planning Board? We'd like to open the floor to any questions or comments. Mr. Crowell? Or Mr. Riley? Sorry.
I brought some deeds for everybody. I hope I have enough copies for everybody. Thanks.
Charlene, this is yours.
No, you gave me back.
That's yours.
Thank you.
If it doesn't have holes in it, it's not mine.
Okay.
Charlene doesn't get a copy, because she says title didn't matter.
Well, I need one for the case file. I didn't say title didn't matter.
Okay, so, the first, lowest deed in the pile is a deed from Alonzo Cahoon to James Freeman Ellis. And it talks about beginning at the point of the north line of said street, with the southwest corner of the granite premises at a silverleaf tree, or to a stake thence east of the line of said street, 110 feet, more or less, to the nest in the ground. Thence north, to the west line of land of one Anton, thence north to the line of one Anton, to an iron pipe in the ground. Thence north, to the line of A.E. Cahoon, Alonzo, to a stake 500 feet, then west 100 feet, 110. Then, you know, back in a straight line. Okay, so, every deed after that says 110 feet by 500 feet. And so, the, you know, this isn't a miscalculation that's characterized by my brother. This is a leap of hope and faith by title examiners and surveyors, saying, "Well, if we can't find who owns it, then I guess we own it." And so, you know, I'm not, we're not claiming that my client, Jeff Cracks, is an owner, but our understanding is that you have to be an owner, and just because you present a plan, doesn't mean you're an owner, it means you claimed to be an owner. So, our suggestion to the Board, even though the title is not supposed to be an issue, is that you get some indication from somebody that justifies anything besides, well, it must go over there, because we don't have anybody in the middle. So, that's what we would ask on behalf of Mr. Crack and the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in, Mary?
I just don't think it's our purview to negotiate over the title. We have a deed in front of us, private parties have their own means of dealing with the boundary issues if they, if they think there's a boundary issue. I just don't think it's...
Yeah, it's not, not our plan.
Us going through, running descriptions...
But, Mary, I don't disagree with you, but I just wanted to make sure where the title lay, so that, to determine whether or not they're validly before us. Can't come before us if you don't own the piece of property. I can't come before this board on your house.
Right, but, but we've been told that there was a closing, and there was, there was title insurance, so there's a deed on record.
First time I've heard it, yeah.
Right, so there's a deed on record. So, if Mr. Riley's clients are objecting to that record, I think they have, they have a means to deal with it outside the scope of us. I just don't, I just don't think this group of us here, reading, running descriptions, does anybody any good, because...
Plus, the peoples whose names came up in the course of Mr. Crowell's comments pretty well respect the conveyances.
Yeah.
I mean, they wouldn't put their name on something if...
And I'm not even looking towards that at all, you know, it's, it's simply...
Maybe it's 'cause of what I did for a living for so long.
I get it, I mean, I have as well, I just don't, I just don't think we...
Okay.
I don't think we have a role in deciding the title, a title dispute if there is one.
I agree with Mary. So, I just don't think we should be talking about who owns what. I think we need to talk about what we're going to do and what's before us. So, at this point, I think if there's anybody in the audience that would care to make comments about this plan, you're welcome to do so. You can stand at the podium, make sure you state your name and where you live, and please sign in for us, and...
Well, there's no sign in.
There's nothing, then we'll take your name. Strike that from the right, we'll take your name, and you can go ahead and speak, and...
Hello, my name's Jeffrey Krahcht, K-R-A-C-H-T. I own the house at 1032 Queen Anne Road, I'm the abutter to the north, and I'm very excited to be part of the Harwich community. I watch all the meetings on YouTube, and recognize some of the faces. I'm really excited to be part of the community that cares about old houses, history, trees, open space, and I really don't want a driveway next to my lot line, going 200 feet that could go back to some big house that might have weekly rentals. As far as the title's concerned, it's always been 110 by 500, and this drawing that shows two and a half acres was only done last September of 2018. So, the Doucettes never paid taxes on it, what I'm calling 1028, it's a separate lot. 1022's always been 110 by 500, so, again, I'd really appreciate keeping trees and nature, and my other neighbors, you know, would, don't want this development. Thank you.
Don't, could you stay there for me?
Sure.
You're Mr.?
Krahcht, K-R-A-C-H-T, and 1032.
Just to the east.
The plan that we're looking at, you're to the right.
Yes.
Yeah. What's the size of your lot, sir?
It's about two-thirds of an acre.
And, and who's behind you?
My neighbors, Lori and Phil, and then the preserve is going on Arthur's Way.
And access to Lori and Phil's property is from Heritage Way, right?
Old Heritage Way, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, anyone? Please.
Hello, I'm Nina Schessler, and I live at 1040 Queen Anne Road, where I've been a resident for 43 years. And over Memorial Day weekend, I heard a bunch of trees being cut down over in that area, and it really concerned me, so I went out and I said, you know, to the man in the back, "What's going on?" He said, "Oh, you know, we're just cutting down dead trees, you know, in the woods." And I said, "Oh, all right." But I am concerned, because to say that there's a driveway going to another house, to me says it's a road, number one. Number two, you know, that area has changed with the preserve coming in, and, you know, the neighbors have had to accept that after so many years. I'm concerned about nature, I'm concerned that, you know, it's gonna change the neighborhood. I'm an abutter at 1040 to Jeff's house, and, you know, it just seems like years ago, when I first bought that house, I have an acre, a little over an acre and a quarter, I believe, and we asked at the time, gee, could we subdivide this? And have a panhandle lot with an acre and a quarter? And we were told we didn't have enough frontage, and that it was not appropriate. So, I don't know, you know, I don't really understand, you know, why they would want to put a panhandle, and it's, it's a roadway, and, and it's very concerning to me, and I'm not happy about it, and I'm really against it happening in the neighborhood, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. Anyone else like to speak up?
My name is Cheryl Dorn, and I live at 36 Old Heritage Way. As you can see on your map, there are both properties, I don't know if you can see it.
It doesn't show well.
Right at the top.
I'm right at the top, yeah, right.
The left of the, the cul-de-sac.
When I bought my house 17 years ago, I was told that nobody could ever build behind me, because that lot...
Cheryl, I'm sorry, Cheryl, can you bring the microphone?
Oh, I'm sure, sorry.
It's hard to hear you, sorry.
Okay, I know my voice is deep, so. I was told that nobody could ever build behind me, so this is really concerning me, because I'm gonna be losing my privacy, and there are many mature trees behind me, and I'm afraid that they're gonna be cut down. I do do Airbnb at my house, and one of the reasons that my guests like to stay at my property is because it's quiet, and it has a lot of privacy, and I'm afraid it'll affect my business. And when I bought my property, I was told that that was unknown owners, and it could never be sold. So, I don't understand what's going on, and I'm really against this. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Well, thank you for speaking up.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Anyone else?
Hi, Laura Gillespie Lee. I live at 44 Old Heritage Way. We moved there about a year and a half, we've been in Harwich for over eight years, but we sold our previous home and moved there. And at the time, we were aware of the preserve, and we were okay, because we knew there was supposed to be a good buffer, the Planning Board approved that. supposed to be a good buffer, the planning board approved that. Now, to have this side, though, also encrouched, and I'm very concerned that the subdivision is showing 64,000 feet in the back, which means a very large house is going to go in there. It's not going to be the average Cape Cod home. It is going to be something that is going to probably rent. This is a very working-class neighborhood. We're very quiet at night, and I'm not looking forward to that, quite frankly. Based on that, if this is approved, I really would ask that some kind of buffer be put between my property and this by the developers, to try to mitigate some of that noise, and to keep some of the nice nature look around the property. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Any, any more comments? You're allowed to speak up. Okay?
And just, you know, if you want to think about things, you have plenty of time.
I'd move to continue.
A second.
Wait, continue to when? You got to continue to date and time certain.
I understand. What date do I need?
I just lost my...
I only know if you tell me.
Hold on, hold on. The next meeting is the 23rd of July, and the meetings after that are August 13th and August 27th.
Move to continue to August 13th.
Sooner than?
No sooner than 6:30 PM.
No sooner than...
No sooner than 6:30 PM.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you all very much. The next, the next item before us is PB 2019-24.
You may want to wait till it quiets down a bit.
Okay, Wendy Grant Walter, as owner, care of William Crowell, Esquire representative, seeks approval of a use special permit for an accessory structure with bedroom. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-13, dash 14 point Q, dash 51, and Section 400, Table 1, for the residential accessory building with bedrooms. The property is located at 55 Bank Street, Map 14, Parcel X14, in the R-L zoning district. Mr. Crowell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This structure has already been constructed. For the record, I'm Attorney William Crowell from Harwich Port. This was constructed pursuant to two building permits, as I outlined in my narrative, issued by the Building Department, the first one on September 28th, 2018, last fall, and then March 8th, 2019. So, I just wanted, at the outset, to make it clear that this is not a case of my clients being caught with their hand in the cookie jar. This is not something they built illegally. They built it pursuant to two building permits. It seems like it's been the source of confusion, or has been the source of confusion, between the builder, the owner, the Building Department, and the Board of Health, everybody. They've been, the only time it wasn't a source of confusion was they went to Historic and got approval from the Historic Commission.
Because it's well-run.
Thanks, Joe. Others would disagree.
Okay, let's continue. So...
Sorry.
It's okay.
It's been the source of much confusion and consternation for my client, Wendy Walter, trustee of the Wendy Walter Revocable Living Trust, because she wanted to have a bedroom above this new barn that was constructed. Not a kitchen, a bathroom, and a bedroom. And when the building permits were issued, there were restrictions put on the first time in September. It said, "No bath on second floor, cannot be used as a bedroom." So, then there was discussion, I was not involved, but the builder was, Christopher McGrath, and there was discussion with the Board of Health, and so, another building permit issued on March 8th, 2019, and to amend the, the original permit to construct a second-floor bathroom with a workshop office above the garage, with a restriction that it be office-only, no sleeping. But since that time, the Board of Health has indicated that the septic system is compliant, is sufficient and adequate to support a bedroom above the garage. And I believe that's part of the staff report here, that the Board of Health has indicated that. So, the purpose of the petition is to legitimize this child that was born out of wedlock. That's the way I look at it, to put the stamp of approval on the, the building that's there. And so, we filed a petition for a detached residential structure with a bedroom. There's a principal dwelling, as shown on the plan. The structure will not be rented. It does not have a kitchen, won't have a kitchen. The septic system has sufficient capacity to accommodate the additional bedroom, as well as the bedrooms in the principal residence. So, we're seeking a special permit, as if we were coming to you originally, prior to construction, and saying, "We want a detached residential structure with a bedroom." If that had been done from the beginning, I think there would be no question about the legitimacy of this child. So, the special permit argument is that the use will not adversely affect the neighborhood. The site is in appropriate location for the use. There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, and adequate and appropriate facilities are provided for the proper, proper operation of the proposed use pursuant to the requirements of the bylaw for findings of a special permit by this board. So, we'd ask that the board grant the special permit this evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Charlene?
The applicant has also requested waivers from any and all commercial or residential requirements of the bylaw that are not applicable to this petition. The fire conservation and police have no concerns. Health department, as stated by Attorney Crowell, septic system has been upgraded to accommodate the new bedroom. This accessory structure does not contain a kitchen. Should cooking facilities be added to the structure, the septic tank must be upgraded to include a two-compartment tank or two tanks in series. My comments are the application neglected to indicate that this property is also in the CV zoning district. However, this is not a fatal flaw, so the board can move forward. The waivers are reasonable. At this time, it appears that all requirements have been met, and standard conditions, including the condition from the Board of Health, are recommended at this time. But other than that, I have no issues with this application.
Okay, sure. Any comments from the, from the planning board?
I have a question.
Bill?
The lot size is 35,000 square feet. That's enough for five bedrooms?
From a septic standpoint, it's not in a zone of contribution. So, it's not the five, the 10,000 per bedroom, square foot, it does not hold in this area.
Then the, the other question I have on the very last page of a set of plans that were given to us, what is the small 12-by-8 addition? What is that?
Thank you, Bill. If you didn't ask that, I was going to. Yeah, yeah.
Very last page.
Yeah. I asked my client about that, I was a month or two ago. I believe the response was, "It's a tool shed."
Attached to the house?
No.
Not to the house, to the barn.
Barn, I'm sorry.
To the barn that was constructed, yes. Meet setbacks.
Because, okay, if it does meet setbacks, then it should be drawn on the plot plan and certified.
Is it, is that it?
Because it doesn't show on the plot plan.
It shows the workshop on the drawings.
Yes. But it's added to the workshop. This here is added to the dimensions of the workshop.
That is the workshop.
No.
Oh, oh, it's a little shed, yeah.
Yeah. Is it yours?
It's a good friend of mine's.
No. You can wait.
I believe it's shown on the septic system plan that I, that I submitted. It's shown on, it says, "Building under construction, slab foundation." Back of that is, is that tool shed.
No, this, no. The dimensions don't add up. That's been added on to the 20-by-16 workshop.
If you're correct, I have no problem with submitting a revised plan, but...
If you look at what's on the screen, and I'm not sure why it didn't end up in your packets, it is shown on that plan, which is the, if I can find it.
It's not included in the drawings we have.
We don't have that.
I did not submit that...
It's in the electronic packet.
I didn't submit it as part of my petition, but she has included that, apparently, in your electronic packet.
Well, we still need it, I think.
I think so.
Yeah. I think so, too.
I think she has it, I think we just didn't get it.
It was inclu, I don't...
Said it's on the electronic.
It should be complete.
Yeah. Apologize that you didn't get it. I came in on a vacation to try and do your packets, and if I missed a page, sorry. But it was in your electronic packets, and it is shown up here, and I can pass this along, but it does, that shed does show on this plan.
The other question, Mr. Chairman? Sure. Is this structure all?
That is within the required setbacks?
It's 99 feet from the side rear line.
I seen it was, but they do have it certified on that...
That plan that's going around, it's, it is on there, and it was in the electronic packet.
It'll be in the decision.
I think the other question I have...
It'll be in the...
So, the chairman is, is this structure already built?
That's what I said at the beginning. It's already built.
Is it complete, or has it been started?
It's only lacking a, an occupancy permit. And I think the Building Department's waiting for this board to legitimize it, and then they'll issue a occupancy permit.
But it did have a building permit.
It had two building permits. One in the fall and one in early, in, in March, yes.
The board should know, by the way, that if I have a good day and I can throw the ball well, I could probably throw them from my backyard into this property.
But you're not in a butter.
Well, I'm not in a butter. No, no, no.
Wanted to make that clear.
Mr. Chairman? Sir, question...
I thought you were on the other side of 28.
The building permits that you referred to, the two, did, did those permits include this, whatever we're calling it?
Shed.
Was that part of the one or two building permits that were issued?
I don't have the answer to that. I'm relying on the plan that Ms. Greenhouse has circulated.
And, and this was a plan that was dated, this is a certified plot plan, dated June 17 of 19, so this is less than a month old.
It's the latest.
And another question, if I may?
Sure.
The garage that is built currently, that we're talking about to legitimize, where's the driveway for the garage on, is that it going out to Bank Street?
Yes.
Okay.
Says Street Drive.
Shell Drive.
Oh, Shell, okay, I couldn't, because that's not...
I have my contacts in. It says Shell Drive.
Shell Drive.
And it is, this, that plan is listed as one of the documents in your staff report. And I don't know why it wasn't included.
Hopefully, the board could see its way to finalize this, this evening, and that that would not be a fatal flaw about the, the tool, tool shed, as it is shown on those plans.
Counselor, I know you explained when you started how we ended up with the illegitimate, illegitimate child. Can you briefly reiterate why two building permits were issued and this never came to the planning board?
Confusion between the builder and the town hall. And the builder, the Board of Health, the Building Department. They, according to my client, she thought that that was all part of the original package, that she would have a bedroom there. And then I believe the Board of Health raised an issue with it.
As, as did your planner.
And I wasn't part of that whole process. I'm just trying to go from memory, from what she told me a month, month or two ago. And so, they tried to address that with the change to the septic, amendment to the septic, and then the Building Department said, "Okay, then we'll issue another permit, so that you can have the bathroom up there, but you cannot have a bedroom, office only." And wanted to restrict it by a deed restriction. And then my client said, "But why should it be restricted if we have a septic system sufficient to support a bedroom? Why can't I have a bedroom?" And then it was determined that she had to file, they came to me with that, and I said, "Well, it sounds to me like we have to file for a special permit with the planning board for what we've applied for tonight."
Tonight.
What he said.
And I called Ms. Greenhouse, and she said what you said.
Yeah.
She agreed.
Thank you.
Because when, all permits come through me, and when I saw it, I said, you know, "I will sign off on this," and I put, "As long as this isn't a bedroom." And that's what the Board of Health did, and so, it went through all that, and then that's how...
She can go bloody there.
What Counselor said.
So, you said that back, that was not a part of a planning board process, that was back for the issuance of the building permit?
No, this was, right. Back when they originally applied for the building permit, it had space above, and I said, "This is fine, as long as it's not used as a bedroom."
So, just for clarification, you said that because they hadn't come before planning board for a special permit use?
Exactly.
If they had come before planning board for a special permit use...
I would have said, perfect.
They would have had a different review. So, that's all. I just wanted to connect the dots.
Right, exactly.
Charlene, was the shed part of that on the original building permit?
I can't remember. I honestly can't remember, Bill. That was months ago.
Is, you know, is the shed a deal breaker in your opinions?
Not, not really, just as long as the permit is...
I have no, I see no reason not to proceed.
Yeah, I don't either.
I agree.
Okay.
So, the board issues a decision, if you could, include the shed?
If I might, the building plans are dated at the time that this went to the Building Department.
That's fine.
Okay.
Which is January of 18.
Okay.
So, it was, if these are the same set of plans, which I'm assuming they are because of the date, then...
I'm going to try to do that.
It was part of the original permit.
And that...
And this board can't approve a shed.
Okay.
And the...
Cannot or can't?
Cannot.
This document will replace the one that we got?
No, this document is, is item number three on your staff report.
Okay.
For your plans, and that goes in the decision.
File.
Yeah.
Just for record, that is not a shed, it is an addition on to the garage.
It's whatever it is. But it does show on...
Right?
Yes. It's part of the structure.
It is.
Are there any more comments from the board? Public? Anyone like to speak? Sir, if you'd like.
We can figure it out.
God bless America, you know? I mean, okay. If there's no one in the audience that would like to speak, then I suggest we have a motion.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move, move to approve waivers of any and all commercial or residential requirements of the bylaws that are not applicable to the petition.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So, so, Carrie.
Move to following findings of fact, the property is located primarily, primarily within the R-L zoning district. Two, the use is consistent with the zoning code and will, code and will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Three, the site is in appropriate location for each use. Four, the accessory structure will not contain a stove, and therefore it is not a kitchen, and is not an accessory apartment as defined in three twenty-five dash two, word usage and definitions, dwelling, single family with accessory apartment, in quotes. Five, the proposed parking area will provide sufficient off-street parking, which meets the minimum requirements of the town code, and as such, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians.
David, you second, thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Salute.
Motion to approve the condition to use special permit and waivers for PB two thousand nineteen dash twenty-four, Wendy Grant Walter as owner for an accessory structure with a bedroom pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, three twenty-five dash thirteen and fourteen Q, fifty-one and four hundred. Table one for the residential accessory building with bedrooms for property located at fifty-five Bank Street, map fourteen parcel X fourteen in the RL zoning district. The approval is based on the fact the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich with the above findings and the following conditions. One, the accessory structure is not an accessory apartment pursuant to three twenty-five dash two, word usage and definitions, quote, dwelling, single family with accessory apartment, unquote, and shall not contain a kitchen. Two, per the Health Department, accessory structure does not contain a kitchen. Should cook, should cooking facilities be added to the structure? The septic must be updated to include a two-compartment tank or two tanks in a series. Three, any change of use other than an accessory structure with bedroom shall comply with all other requirements of the zoning code. Four, the special permit decision shall be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. And five, any changes to the plan shall be subject to further planning review.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask for minor changes in that motion? Wendy Grant Walter is trustee of a trust, could we say trustee after her name?
I'll agree to that, yes.
And then, as Town Planner Atroytley pointed out, it's a little bit in the CV district, so could we say RL and CV zoning districts?
Where would that be?
That's on the fifth line down.
In the opening paragraph under section one. It says X fourteen in the R-L zoning district, so insert and C-dash-E.
And C-dash-E.
V.
V. C-dash-V. So, we're adding the letter C-dash-V.
And, the word and.
The word and.
R-L and C-dash-V.
Okay.
So, the R-L and C-dash-V zoning districts.
Yep.
Okay.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, move?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Attorney Pro.
Come again.
Come often.
You will.
Okay.
Be back in a couple of weeks.
So, now we're moving to the public meeting section, new business, we have an item here.
You don't need to open it?
Yep.
But you can say, you know, go ahead. You don't have to read the whole thing, is what I was trying to get at.
PB two thousand nineteen dash twenty-five, Christopher W. Our, Mark Giaruso, Janet S. Our, Brian Blanchard, and Scott O. Our. Applicants, Daniel A. Ojala.
Ojala.
Ojala. PE, Down Cape Engineering Representatives, seek approval of a seven-lot preliminary subdivision plan pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich.
This afternoon, we did receive an email from Priscilla Laclerk from Down Cape Engineering. Hello, Charlene, on behalf of our clients, RB, Our Company at All Down Cape Engineering, respectfully request an extension of the planning board hearing to July twenty-third for the preliminary subdivision off Littlefield Pond Road, Harwich. The subdivision is also on the Board of Health agenda this evening, so that's why they're requesting a continuance to the twenty-third.
Where does that put them in the process?
They're fine with the forty-five days, they're fine. You have until August, I know it says in the staff report somewhere. You, you've got plenty of time, no joke.
Okay, that was my question.
Yep.
All right.
You do need to vote on the continuance.
We need to vote on it, do I hear a motion?
Motion to continue to...
July twenty-third.
July twenty-third.
Not earlier than six-thirty.
Six-thirty.
Not earlier than six-thirty PM.
Do I hear a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, any, the next item we have are advisory opinions, Board of Appeals, July thirty-first, two thousand nineteen.
I do have one for you, because...
And Charlene, we'll read this into the record?
Um, well, we'll, it's, we'll, we'll talk about it first, yeah. And actually, here it is up on the screen. This is actually zoning Board of Appeals case number two thousand nineteen dash twenty-six. The board may recall that Mr. Marsh, trustee of Deerfield Nominee Trust, was before the board and still is. This is a continued hearing for a building at Ford Deerfield Road. At that time, the board did grant a continuance to allow him to go to the zoning Board of Appeals. Also, at that time, at that last meeting, the board did indicate that they would write a letter of support for variance, because the building commissioner determined that it needed to meet the fifty-foot variance. They've only showed it at twenty-five feet. So, they have actually done two things. One, they've appealed the building commissioner's decision that it actually is a rear setback, and in the alternative, they have requested a variance. So, I have prepared a draft letter for you that says this property is currently before the planning board, board for site plan review approval. During the board's initial hearing, it was realized that the proposed building was within the rear yard setback, twenty-five feet where fifty is required. The planning board supports the request for this variance in light of the unique shape of the lot in relation to Deerfield Road and Depot Street. The board does support the building commissioner's decision that this is a rear yard setback and therefore does not support the appeal. So, that's what I wrote.
Okay.
If you like it, great, if you don't, let me know what you want it to say, and I'll be happy to make any changes.
Can I take a look at it, while?
You've got it right in front of you, Jeff.
Right there.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
Is the rear setback that we're discussing?
Where the arrow is, yes.
Okay. So, then, how is the frontage determined since it's the curved road?
The, the way that frontage is described, it's wherever your road is. So, this has road literally on three sides. But when you look at what the definition of rear lot is, it's opposite your frontage.
Okay.
So...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could go either way.
It could go either way, but the building commissioner, and, and I agreed with him one hundred percent is that this is a rear lot based on the definition of frontage and rear lot. But I think it does lend itself to necessitate a variance. If this board could have waived it as part of site plan review, because at the time, somebody asked, I can't remember who, well, can't we just waive that? And I was like, no, you can't, because it's a building setback. It's not in an overlay district, which lets you have some flexibility, this is a dimensional, so you're kind of stuck.
Yep. Any other comments, concerns?
I'm a little confused between the two, I'm sure there's an explanation.
The reason there's two is he's asking for two things. One, they're appealing the building commissioner's denial decision regarding the rear yard setback.
And we're telling them, and we're telling them, we agree with the...
You agree with the building commissioner. So, you don't support their appeal of the building commissioner, but you do support their variance request. My feeling is you should always support your building commissioner.
Say that again.
If this doesn't address the backing out issue on Deerfield.
No, that's something totally different, and that's completely before this board.
Right.
Yep.
I don't want, I don't want this supporting the variance to imply that we're ready to approve the back out.
You're not implying that at all.
Good.
Yeah.
That's good, because...
I think Craig has a question.
Craig.
For you, Charlene, thank you. Say what you said again, the, there's two things, the building commissioner, and we support that?
Or, we always support the building.
They are, yeah, they are appealing the building commissioner's denial decision regarding the rear yard setback. In other words, they say, they're trying to say, no, it's a side yard setback. So, they're appealing the building commissioner's decision.
Right.
So, what I'm saying in the second paragraph, very short, one sentence, is that you support the building commissioner and do not support their appeal of the commissioner.
And this is for the Board of Zoning Appeals case that's coming up?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, case number nineteen dash twenty-six.
Mary, Mary.
Can I connect the dots? There are two ways they can get before the zoning Board of Appeals. One, they can actually seek a variance for a dimensional setback requirement, which is them requesting a twenty-five-foot setback for a rear setback instead of a fifty-foot rear setback.
Right.
The other way you get there is because you seek a, a decision from the building inspector, and you're appealing a building inspector's decision, so...
An I-out usually.
Correct.
Right.
So, so, what Charlene is saying is, yes, we're supporting the variance request, but no, we agree that it's a rear setback and not a side setback.
Yep.
So, the building inspector's made the determination that it's a rear, and it should stay a rear, and we don't, we don't, you know, we're not agreeing with that portion of their argument, but we are agreeing that they should, that the variance would be appropriate to be twenty-five feet as opposed to fifty. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
Any other comments, questions, issues? So, Charlene, do we need to take a vote on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, do I, do I hear?
A move that we agreed to send the draft, the proposed letter to the zoning Board of Appeals relative to ZVA case number two zero one nine dash twenty-six, William Marsh, trustee of the Deerfield Nominee Trust for Ford Deerfield Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that unanimous, were you aye to?
Yep. And is there another one that we?
Nothing else popped out at me.
Okay. Okay, so, next, next, we have case number two thousand nineteen dash twenty-seven. Robert Lothrup has applied for a variance to construct an eighty-foot-long retaining wall within the setback. The application is pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich.
That's ZVA?
That's ZVA.
Yeah, I, none of these raised any other flags.
Yep.
I don't think you need to really go through each of them.
Go through any of them, yeah, we've got Witchmere Harbor, Wilfrid Peach.
I have nothing to say about that, but it looks interesting to me, that, that...
You'll be seeing that.
Yeah, we'll see that.
Will we?
Yes.
Okay.
What about two thousand nineteen dash twenty-nine, will we be seeing that at some point?
No, you don't see single-family dwellings.
Yeah, and then two thousand nineteen dash thirty.
Yeah, same thing.
Same thing, okay.
You will be seeing Witchmere, though.
Okay.
We can't discuss it.
Any, any old business?
I don't have any old business, but can I share some statistics with the board?
Yes, you may.
So, this year, all of last year, we had thirty-nine applications in the entire year, from January one to December thirtieth. This year, as of June thirtieth, you already had twenty-seven applications. You are far ahead of where you were last year. You are also far ahead of where you were last year in terms of fees paid. So, so far, for the second half of, because we just ended fiscal year nineteen, for the second half of fiscal year nineteen, this board generated in fees almost thirty-five thousand dollars. That's more than you've done in a complete year in, in a very long time. So, you know, with all your applications, with, with the zoning amendments that you guys did at the Maytown meeting, you've been busy beavers.
And taking...
And so have I.
And taking a, a long amount of time, six months, to talk about one particular case, so...
I mean, that one particular case, I spent probably over a hundred hours over the course, you know, just...
So, you know, as...
But I just wanted you to know that, you know, you, there's been a lot this year.
So, as the, as the chairman, what I would like to say is, I think a lot, a lot of this is due to the, to the board and to you, Charlene. I think everybody here has contributed, everybody here has spoken up. You know, we welcomed Bill to the board, and that was a big boost, I believe. And I know that the feedback that we've gotten as a team from the Board of Selectmen has been really positive from, from all different angles. So, I'm, I'm, I'm really proud of what this board has done, and I want to thank everybody who's participated in this publicly. And, and Charlene, thank you so much for all your hard work on behalf of the Town of Harwich.
Well, we still have vacancies, don't we?
You do, you have two alternates.
Two alternates, right.
And I don't know, I don't get notified when applications come before the board to, you know, come before, go to the Board of Selectmen for appointment.
Who's doing that on the Board of Selectmen now?
It is McCaskill and Don Howell.
They're doing that, and Steve and Ford is our...
The liaison.
Our new liaison, yeah.
I also want to let you know that I have been in many, many, many conversations with one of the residents down in West Harwich. We actually met for an hour and a half today to talk about zoning in the West Harwich corridor. I'm actually very excited, because this is like real planning, not, this isn't, but it's actually real planning. So, I'm working very closely with him, he's going to reach out to folks, we're looking at the corridor, we're looking at all the buildings from Dennisport Town Line to the Herring River. We're looking at lot sizes, we're looking at frontage, we're looking at the setbacks for all the buildings along there. We're looking at the different uses, we're looking at what are his, are on the historic, you know, or consider historic. So, we're, we're, you know, starting to gather all that information, and we're starting to look at other communities and what they are using for mechanisms for zoning. So, when that's ready, it's going to come to this board for a, a presentation, and hopefully, the board will, you know, be amenable to it. And if so, you know, I think a zoning article coming from the planning board is always more apt to get approved at town meeting than if it's something by petition. So, you know, we're, we're starting this early, I think it's going to be well thought out, and it's, it's actually exciting.
You know what?
Respect to that area, does Habitat, Habitat have some permission to build some properties down there?
They have permission to build six homes, I think it's six homes.
Back from twenty-eight?
Yes. Where ninety-three and ninety-seven, Route twenty-eight are, to the west of ninety-three, which is a newer ranch building, they're actually going to remove a part of the building, and a road is going to go in there.
Yep.
So, it's on the other side of Riverside. It's on the west side of Riverside.
Yep.
Thank you.
You know, it...
Not sure, but I wasn't sure.
Any, any other?
I have a question.
Craig.
Generic about overlay districts. So, we have one currently in town.
You have two.
One in Harwich Port and one in Harwich Center.
Yes.
Does the overlay district zoning allow or require the type of retail to be disclosed? And the reason I ask that generically...
It does not.
It does not.
No. Retail is retail.
Okay. But, right, and that's why...
Under the bylaw.
Part of the question here was, is it, you know, Dollar General or not? And we can't ask specifically, and they don't have to disclose that. I didn't know if it were different, if you had an overlay district where you could...
No.
Get that information. So, for example, I'm trying to be generic, because I don't want to break any laws, but this building that we just approved for, I think, the Patel's here in Harwich Center, could have been, not saying it would have been approved, but could have been an application from Cumberland Farms.
Yep.
Correct?
Yeah.
And as long as the historic...
It could have been a, I mean, it was previously a gas station.
Right.
It's what their application came forward at. It, it's what their application came forward as, right? They came forward as a, as a retail, retail convenience.
Right, they, they indicated that it would be a convenience store, but it received a special perm, or a site plan for retail. They are, they have made application today for the deli, so that will be coming to you in August.
But, if I may, for example, a, another clothing shop could have gone in there, or it could have been retail, you know? Could have been like a, like a sativa that's down in Harwich Port, could have decided to flop a store.
Could have been.
In, right, retail.
Organic seashells, sold by Sally, or whatever, anything. So, again, generically, does the overlay district, the overlay district doesn't then prohibit the type of retail?
No.
But it allows you, the histor, not, it allows the Historic Commission to have a lot more say about the design or the look or whatever of the structure?
The overlay district...
Is zoning.
Is zoning, and if my memory is correct, Charlene, the overlay district let us do village, village-type things, like encouraging having a streetscape versus...
Exactly, it allowed for, under the, the zoning overlay district here in Harwich Center, and we can talk about it, because it was already approved, for Seven-Eleven Main Street, it allowed that building to be significantly closer to the road and the side yard setback than under the underlying zoning.
Which in fact is the, what we want to encourage
Exactly.
within these zoning...
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
Remember, the Harwich Port one and Cumberland Farms was, we wanted the pumps in back and the building up front and all that.
Right, but they didn't come in under the, I was, I wasn't here, but they didn't come under, in, under the overlay district.
Well, that was the whole argument, as to whether it was mandatory or not.
Right.
So, do we have any briefings or reports?
Okay.
Other than that, I have nothing.
Thank you.
I have a first...
I have a question.
You need to go through your chair.
Charlene, uh, Charlene, uh, when we dealt with the Cumberland Farms issue, we realized that it was a voluntary overlay district. Has that been, at the town meeting, was that made a requirement as opposed to a voluntary?
See, if you remember, a year ago, the board was discussing making the overlay district the zoning. And at the, I was just transitioning into this position, and the, um, the board had asked Adam Costa, who is your zoning counsel, to weigh in on that, and he actually said exactly what I thought he was going to say, is, if you make your underlying, if you make the overlay your zoning, you can't waive it. Under, on overlay district, you can waive provisions.
Yep.
For your underlying zoning, you can't, your setback is twenty feet.
Yep.
You have to get a variance to get it any closer. So, you know, I, I knew that's what he was going to say, because I've been dealing with those for a long time. So it was decided at that point, let's leave things the way they are, encourage people. I mean, if, if, um, if the Patel's couldn't have done the overlay, you know, the, that design would be very different than what it is. Um, because the underlying zoning doesn't lend itself to what we ended up with, which I think is a far superior...
And that's what Camelot was built to.
That's what Camelot was built to as well.
Motion adjourned.
I have one question.
One question, go ahead.
Within the plant, within the zoning laws...
Yes.
There's something that says we cannot rule on architecture.
You cannot zone aesthetics.
But, in that wording, can we change it and, and have it say that we can?
No.
Why not?
The town could do that.
No.
Not on, not under the Planning Board, but under another body?
Under Historic.
Only if it's a historic district.
District, which is a town-designated historic district, not a National Register historic district.
And that's based on mass general law.
Mass general law...
Because other jurisdictions can do that.
Mass general law does not allow zoning to govern aesthetics.
But what does Chatham use?
That, no, don't need to do. Chatham has a historic business district.
Yeah.
They created in all their commercial zoning districts, with the exception of industrial, except if you're off Stony Hill, which, whatever, that you, any development within any of their commercial districts also has to go through what they call HBDC for review.
Okay, so shouldn't we start looking into that, doing the same thing?
I don't think you want to do that, quite honest. I, I don't. Doesn't mean that in West Harwich, there might not be something that you look at.
I'm not just talking about West House, I'm talking about the whole town. Get it done with.
Why don't you get a copy of the Chatham thing?
Um, well, I can get that for you, but I, I have to ask this question. Do you really think you're going to get that through town meeting? If you think you can...
I think it could, I mean, there's been enough people concerned about West House, why wouldn't they be concerned about the rest of the town?
It means, it means every single development, whether it's residential or commercial, that's in a commercial zone other than industrial, would have to go through this HBDC.
But as long as it's commercial property, that's not a concern for the whole town.
That's the, almost the entire corridor of Route twenty-eight.
I understand that.
Um, that is one thirty-four, that, I mean, there...
Thirty-seven?
One thirty, yeah, one thirty-seven, um, and thirty-nine. I mean, if that's a direction this board wants me to go, I'll pull stuff together for you, but I, I hope you think...
Well, we know...
Long and hard about that, and also, it's one more Board of Committee, because it's not the Historic Commission, it's a different committee.
So it wouldn't be...
And it depends on how you do it, right.
It would be the Board of Selectmen would have to make emphasis.
I'd like to...
Well, no.
I'd like to see it, because we know something's going to happen on one thirty-seven, it's just, just time.
Yeah, it'll happen.
It could be a year away, or it could be less.